Vicki, you may begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for attending this evening's candidate forum, featuring the candidates running for the trustee positions for the Schaumburg Township Board. My name is Vicki Martin, and I'm the co-president and forum chairman of the League of Women Voters of the Palatine Area, which includes not only Schaumburg and Hoffman Estates, but also neighboring communities with whom we share legislative districts. The League's purpose is to promote responsibility through informed and active participation of all citizens. Providing this forum enables members of the community to become better informed about the issues facing their community and the candidates running for office. We're pleased to offer this service to you. We'd like to extend our sincerest thanks to Kate Nehoff and Annie Tillman from Schaumburg Township District Library, whose help and technology have made today's forum possible. I'm happy to introduce our co-host Annie Tillman, who will be operating this webinar. I'll turn the forum over to Annie, who will explain the technological aspects of our forum.
Thank you so much, Vicki. To start us off, we're going to launch a poll just to get a little bit more information about who is joining us from home. During today's presentation, all audience members will be muted. We will not be using the chat or raised hand features, and all questions for the candidates have been submitted by the audience at the time of registration or from local nonpartisan organizations. As you're filling out that poll, I'd like to go over a couple of other things regarding the closed captioning. If you are on a computer and you would like to enable or disable that, you can find that along the bottom of your screen. If you're joining from a tablet or a mobile device, that can be found in your settings on the app. And if you're joining us on YouTube, the captions will remain on your screen. I am pleased to introduce our moderator for today's forum, Catherine Sawyer. Catherine is a member of the League of Women Voters and is a trained moderator. We are very fortunate that she is able to be with us this evening. I'm going to leave the poll up so that a few more people can answer, and once you have completed that poll, it will leave your screen. Take it away, Catherine.
Thank you, Annie. Good evening, everyone. It's certainly my pleasure to be with you tonight to moderate this candidate forum. I'm a resident of Palatine and therefore not eligible to vote in this election. So I've been asked to serve as an impartial facilitator for our discussion as a volunteer with the League of Women Voters. Let me take a few minutes to explain the forum and the rules of the forum. All candidates were contacted by mail, email, and phone, and have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters. They are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order. The moderator will rotate this order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Next, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. The moderator will repeat the question if necessary. If needed, a rebuttal may be requested, and each candidate may use a maximum of two rebuttals. Rebuttals will be timed and limited to 30 seconds each. At the end, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Candidates will be given a 30-second warning, so please quickly wrap up your thoughts when you see the stop sign. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. Today's forum will be recorded for the League of Women Voters to use in educating the public. A video of this forum will be available early next week on the League of Women Voters Palatine Area website and the Schaumburg Library website. The candidates have agreed to this. No voice, image, or other duplication of this forum may be used by candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. The League claims copyright ownership of all recordings or transcripts produced from this event and reserves the right to publicize this forum. To view this forum, please go to the League's website at www.lvpalatinearea.org. In our forum today, we'll hear from seven of the eight candidates hoping to fill four open trustee positions for the Schaumburg Township. With us today and on the ballot are Diane Dunham, Robert Fiorio, Demetrius Gibson, Charlotte Kegariz, Jeffrey Maitak, Lauren Saturnus, and Matthew Stewart. Nimesh Jani is also on the ballot but unable to be with us this evening. He submitted a statement that I will be reading at the end of today's forum before the other candidates offer their closing remarks. I want to thank you all for your participation, and we will begin with your two-minute opening statements. By number draw, Ms. Saturnus will go first. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Saturnus. I am a school psychologist and mom of two young daughters. I graduated from Duke University and earned a specialist degree in school psychology from Illinois State University. My husband and I moved to Schaumburg Township over 11 years ago to raise our family and be part of this community. I have served on the town's health committee for five years and was elected as chair three years ago. During my time on the committee, we have drastically increased the programs offered to the community to raise awareness about mental health and mental health services. I look forward to bringing that leadership experience to the township as a whole in order to improve the services offered by other departments, including those for senior citizens, people with disabilities, and individuals and families who need support. Currently, there is no accountability among the township's elected officials, all of whom are Republican. The general assistance fund has been cut during a time of economic crisis. Vocational services, which would ultimately reduce the cost of emergency assistance for residents, has been slashed by 40% over the last three years. And the board has failed to adequately respond to the COVID-19 crisis, declining the opportunity to host a testing site during the winter surge. Our Democratic slate will bring much-needed accountability to the township. We will center our focus around the vital services provided by the township while ensuring that taxpayer dollars are used wisely for the betterment of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Maitak, your two-minute opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters of Palatine Area. I've been a Schaumburg and Schaumburg Township resident since 1997, when I got married and moved here, also raising my two daughters here. They've gone through School District 54 and 211 schools and are currently at Harper College. I've got a bachelor's degree in marketing and an MBA from Elmhurst University. I currently work in supply chain. My township experience started in 2009 when I was elected collector. I was also serving on the Schaumburg Township Human Services Fund. At the time, collector was an unpaid position. I was appointed to be a trustee in 2011, which is a paid position. However, I've not received any increase in that role, and as a matter of fact, this board has not taken any pay increases since 2005, and we have eliminated the pension and benefits for elected officials. I've sat on many committees within the township, which have been good for me. I've learned about the community needs and the agencies that address those needs for our most vulnerable residents. I've also been involved in the other township organizations, Township Officials of Cook County, Metropolitan Township Association, where I get to interact with other townships to see what they're doing, get ideas and things to bring back to Schaumburg Township, also share successes that we've had in Schaumburg Township with those other townships. I've got a passion for what Schaumburg Township does. I'm always promoting it in the community. The trustees corner in the town crier that came out in the fall, I had wrote up something pretty much just talking about Township 101 and how the township is there for individuals, especially this past year with COVID and their needs that have been brought to them. That was also in the Daily Herald in December. It's just addressing the mental health and the physical health and employment and...
Thank you, Mr. Maitak. Mr. Stewart, your two-minute opening statement, please.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you all for coming to participate in what I know will be a great forum. My name is Matthew J. Stewart, and I was born and raised right here in Schaumburg, where anyone who knows me can attest that I've talked for most of my life about being involved in my community. And I know I'm more than qualified enough to do so and capable, so I figure why wait any longer than getting involved more now? I hope my fellow candidates also feel the choice democracy provides our community is a good thing as well. I currently help run the finance department of a major loop law firm with a $250 million budget, and I serve as an adjunct professor at Dominican University, teaching business law and career development, which is kind of a networking skills class, teaching students how to write resumes, cover letters, how to apply for and interview for jobs. I also sit on a variety of boards of directors, first and foremost of which that I'm most honored to serve as the president of the Board of Directors for Resources for Community Living, a nonprofit that helps developmentally disabled adults who aren't severe enough to qualify for state aid but could otherwise slip through the cracks and who want to live independently. We help them get and keep both jobs and housing balanced, their checkbooks, and start to save meaningfully for their futures. And so my dad, back in the day, was my citizenship and the community merit badge counselor on my way to earning the rank of Eagle Scout in Troop 493 here in Schaumburg, and that developed in me a deep desire to make the biggest difference possible to the most amount of people and give back to the great community from which I was raised to go on to earn my JD and MBA. I was also raised with not one but two special-needs siblings, which is why ensuring access to mental health care matters to me. And the training that I got as a family moderator at dinner tables serves me well on the boards that I sit on and my day job as well. So I'm running for township trustee because I love Schaumburg, but I think we can always do better, so I now feel called to serve to provide residents with a choice on Election Day as it's time for me to give back to our community in even more meaningful ways.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, your opening statement, please.
Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Schaumburg Library for coordinating and hosting this event. My name is Demetrius Gibson, and I'm running for Schaumburg Township trustee. I've lived in the township since I joyfully relocated here in 2005. My wife and I have four wonderful children, and we've enjoyed our experience here, the friendships that we've built, and the contributions that we've been able to make to the community. Like many of you, I wear many hats and have many titles: husband, father, friend, neighbor, etc. And it's for all those titles and more that I run for this office. I've always strived for a role in leadership, and it started before I even had a choice. From marching for the abolishment of apartheid in the 80s to supporting my local each-one-teach-one center where we provided programs and services for the community, community, sorry, to president of my junior achievement club, to president of my associate student body in high school, to vice president of my National Society for Black Engineers chapter at Purdue University, to president of my prior organization's African-American Business Resource Group, and probably a few others that I've overlooked, but I'm not counting tonight. Through all of those experiences, my goal has been singular: to make those around me better and to leave the world a better place each day. No doubt there have been setbacks, and there will likely be more in the future, but the push is to overcome them and to not let them hinder progress. I will bring these experiences, knowledge, and forthrightfulness to bear on the responsibilities of this office. My role will always be to serve as the voice of the constituent. With your support, we can provide our township with the leadership, services, and programs it deserves. With your support, I will proudly serve in your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kegariz, your two-minute opening statement, please. Ms. Kegariz, you're on mute.
Now, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Kegariz. Forty-two years ago, I bought a home in Schaumburg. Having been a military family for the whole extent of my childhood, I never envisioned that I would live a lifetime in one place, and that one place has been Schaumburg, and what a gift it's been to my family. I immediately became involved in local and civic affairs. With a young family, I joined many family-oriented activities: J.C. Women, local PTAs, the Schaumburg Athletic Association, and the Village Bike Ways Commission, just to name a few. My involvement in schools led to a rewarding 28 years as a board member. Last year, an opportunity to continue service to the community presented itself when I was appointed to the Township Board of Trustees. Taking on my new challenge, I immersed myself in acquiring knowledge to successfully serve as a township trustee. I enrolled in training, attended seminars, networked with township officials from other townships, just so I know exactly what was needed to, in order to be a good trustee and to bring government to the people. We serve citizens from several different communities in the unincorporated area of the township. Being able to serve the community is a privilege and an honor, and with your support, I'll be able to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dunham, your opening statement, please. Ms. Dunham, you're on mute.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters of Palatine for hosting this event. I'm Diane Dunham, a 42-year Schaumburg resident. I am a Schaumburg Township trustee. I served on Committee for Disabled Citizens, Senior Citizen Services Committee on Youth, and Mental Health Committee. I'm also a member of Technology Committee and was a member of the Human Resource Committee. My education includes Bachelor of Science in Biology, project management training, and an MBA in Finance, Operations, and Human Resources. And I have extensive experience as an information technology professional. I'm a strong supporter of fiscal responsibility, staff training, and human services. During the time that I was on the board, the human services grants for the agencies went up to $1,036,000. Out of that, and it was never cut. And out of that, the Mental Health Committee, I'm sorry, the Mental Health Agencies have received well over $800,000, just so everyone understands the type of services we provide. Kenneth Young alone, Kenneth Young that we pay for and support, has provided 12,632 hours of services. I am dedicated to community service. I love this community. It's a wonderful community. The people are wonderful. However, COVID-19 showed us that experienced leadership on the board is the one to lead during tough times, and we have had some tough times, and we were flexible enough to actually adjust to it and provide people with thousands of meals, energy kits, contacts, passports, et cetera. I'm Diane Dunham, and I am running for the Schaumburg Township trustee.
Thank you. And Mr. Fiorio, your two-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Sawyer, and Ms. Peterson, as well as the League of Women Voters for this forum and Schaumburg Township Library for facilitating. My name is Robert Fiorio. I'm a Democratic candidate for Schaumburg Township trustee and part of Schaumburg Together Slate. I'm a 30-year resident of Schaumburg Township with my wife of 30 years, Barbara, who happens to be a 10-year employee of the Township Library. And we have two daughters, Samantha and Heather, and a golden retriever named Ivy. I was born and raised in Maine Township in a proud Union family of lifetime Democrats. My parents were volunteers for many candidates over the years and election judges. I graduated from Maine North High School, Western Illinois University, and then Keller Graduate School of Management with an MBA in Marketing and Business Administration. I was fortunate enough to have a successful 40-year career as a transportation industry executive, then retired and formed my own consulting firm. I also am a teacher with District 211, as well as High School District 87. I'm an IHSA sports official for four different sports and a USA hockey referee. I also work as an election judge. I volunteered for Schaumburg Athletic Association for many, many years, and I now volunteer for the Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois. We live in a very special community and thought it was time to give back my talents to the community to work hard to improve residents' lives.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorio. We'll move on to questions now. We'll have one minute to answer questions. We'll continue to rotate the order. I'll start with, "What is the most important issue to the township at this time?" Mr. Maitak?
I believe the most important issue that's in the community now is the COVID crisis. The township is taking that seriously as far as the people coming into the building. We also were able to keep our programs going. We've actually developed more programs for people that are homebound, for seniors that need activities that where they would come in. Now they have online activities, things to keep them going. We're still doing bingo. We are also able to work with Jewel Osko in getting some COVID vaccines, so we've got an event, there's an event coming up this week at Schaumburg High School, and Schaumburg Township was heavily involved in registering people to do that. That's what we've, the focus is there, and that's where our focus has been, is getting people the the vaccines and the services they need during this crisis.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you for asking the question. Obviously, I think it's going to be a unanimous across-the-board answer that, yes, COVID is a main concern, and how the township responds to that is important. And I think that we can do better by our residents than we have already. And I'm well aware of all the resources that the township has, but I think one thing the township can do better about is to notify people of what's out there and have more transparency in what they're offering. Not only that, but to be sensitive to the needs of the voters and the residents and lead by example, wearing masks at all times, even, you know, when on a board meeting. If you're in a meeting hall, wearing masks at all times among all members universally, different things that they can be doing for the COVID response. You know, if this wasn't COVID times, if it wasn't COVID as the number one answer, I would say transparency would be the number one issue.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson?
Yes, I'm glad Mr. Maitak brought up COVID, but let's be quite frank with the way that the current trustees have responded to COVID crisis. It's been poor and lackluster, and quite frankly, they failed our constituents in providing the adequate resources and response needed. They talked about COVID early in the year. You can check the meeting notes, but they talked about actually putting together a COVID plan, but no plan was ever implemented, no action was ever taken. The township also received $30,000 in COVID relief, but where did that money go? Again, my friend, Mr. Stewart, talked about transparency, but there hasn't been any transparency on how the response has been adequately servicing the needs of our constituents. And quite frankly, you know, that, you know, hundred or 200 or so people that they helped just recently with getting vaccinations was something that was promoted and put forward by the District 54 staff and not the current trustees. So there's a lot of work to be done, and I would I would say that they have done a poor job to date in servicing what is pointed out by Mr. Maitak as the most important need of our constituents.
Thank you. Ms. Kegariz?
Can you hear me? From day one, when COVID was announced and they started shutting down all the buildings and schools and having as many people work from home as possible, our township people, especially our people from GA, hit the streets running. They set up food banks outside, so there was no way that the people working the food banks or the people coming to pick up would be able to contact each other so that the COVID would be spread. We made sure that no one was made to feel like they were coming for a handout. We did a great job. All they had to do was drive up. We loaded their cars with the groceries, and they drove on. And we did that for the first month, and we didn't check IDs or anything because all of a sudden, we found that people who had jobs all of a sudden were now are newly poor. So after a month, and people started finding places in their own community to get food.
Thank you, Ms. Kegariz. Ms. Dunham?
So during the COVID-19, when everyone was closed, the township provided 1,081 passports, 19,936 senior contacts, 6,602 program participants, 30,000 phone calls were made to various people within the township to make sure that they knew that help was available here. And 15,000 meals were provided. Within the disability, there were additional 6,822 contacts to the people within the township. 15,000 one-way rides. So the total was like 83,000 miles driven, and the assessor visits was 5,200 with 2,600 appeals. So we have responded to COVID-19 properly. We have provided the services, and I am very proud of the township and our employees.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorio?
Thank you. Yeah, the response from Schaumburg Township has been inept. According to their meeting notes, they haven't even discussed COVID since November. So while over a half million of our fellow citizens have lost their lives due to COVID, the township's response has been very poor. While neighboring townships are working hand-in-hand with the villages to provide testing, tracing, and tracking, such as Roselle right next door, Skokie, Evanston, they provided vaccinations for all their citizens. So I think that there was a lot more to do from our township, and we really want to know what happened to that $30,000 and where that was spent because that was a good start to actually make some inroads in the health problems with COVID.
Thank you. Ms. Saturnus?
Certainly, the township needs a more robust and creative response to the COVID-19 crisis, but I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about accountability because I believe that is also a very important aspect of this election. At the same time that the board cut the general assistance tax levy back in the fall, they increased the road and bridge levy by 5%, the maximum allowed without having a public hearing. This was after they approved the Highway Commissioner's budget, which included a dramatic increase across two line items, and those were printing and postage. Those two items alone went from $1,500 to $33,000, a 22-fold increase. The Highway Commissioner at that point also had to be running for state representative last year and sent out a mailer to every single resident of Schaumburg Township featuring his name and picture just weeks before that election. So the current board approved of taking money away from residents who need help the most in this economic crisis in order to help one of their political allies and indeed one of their spouses. So a vote for new leadership would be a vote for accountability.
Thank you. The next question. Oops, I see some rebuttals coming. Why, I saw Mr. Gibson first. You have 30 seconds.
Yeah, trustee Dunham pointed out that the response was adequate. Again, she pointed out making phone calls and servicing passports, and again, this is not what the township needed at the time of the COVID response. The website, which now demonstrates that it is current, hasn't been updated since November of last year. They just updated it last week. And finally, I'd like to point out that in March, a resolution was presented to the trustee or to the board. Resolution 2020, 2021, number three, for approving COVID emergency sick leave passed forward because no one wanted to second it.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Kegariz, your rebuttal. 30 seconds, please.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Just a couple things. We did respond to stuff. Immediately, we put a plan in place. Just a couple things. We did respond to stuff. Immediately, we put a plan in place. That's why you haven't seen it discussed again on our agendas. We put a plan in place, and we've been acting upon it every single day since COVID started. We've been acting upon it out there, working with the people in our community, the most vulnerable people in our community, and we've taken really good care of them. And you're talking about the highway department. That is not a department that the trustees control. It's a whole, complete, separate form of government.
Your rebuttal time is done. Anything else before we moved on to the next question? All right. The next question. What will be your top three priorities if you're elected? And we'll start with Mr. Stewart.
Sure. I appreciate the question. And as I mentioned before, transparency is obviously a top, but since that's been discussed, I'll go on to the other two to make sure I cover all three in a lot of time. I also feel that we need to have a better, we just need to work on diversity as well. And our slate of candidates, Schaumburg Together, the Democratic candidates before you, represent a very diverse group. We have, you know, assembled that intentionally and for that reason, not just diverse in race, but also in gender. I feel that we need to put in place pay equity guarantees at the township level, not just for township staff, but also for anybody bidding to do work in the township. And I also think that our third, I see my time is running out, area of strength is for inclusion, just making sure that the community feels included and is made aware of what the township is doing.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson?
Yes, we've already agreed that COVID is the most pressing issue to the township, so I add to others. My friend, Ms. Saturnus brought it up already, but transparency is critically important. We just heard a rebuttal talking about how the current trustees are out and acting upon their plan that has never been published or brought forward so that people can see what actions or steps they're actually taking and executing in order to ensure that the actions that they apparently agreed to do have been actually put in place, and they've actually marked off those checkmarks along the path towards success. And lastly, I want to talk about moving forward. The township needs to lean into the future and not wait for things to come upon us. This is exactly what happened during the COVID response. They waited around, sat on their hands, did nothing, and when it was time to finally act due to the pressure around them, they finally got up and did something, stating the website just was recently updated last week, and stating the District 54 work that they did, which was not their plan, but they actually glommed onto in order to look like they were actually being proactive. So again, we need to move forward, and we need to be ready for those that are going to be coming to us, not act when they arrive at our doorstep.
Thank you. Ms. Kegariz?
Can you hear me? Well, just, I guess this will be a rebuttal to Mr. Gibson, because our, our partnership with the school district, it didn't just fall in our laps. For years, we've worked side by side with District 54. The minute the COVID plan was put into place, the schools closed, they transferred all of their food over to the township, and we continued to provide food and lunches for those kids that had been getting it from the school. And so when they get something, they share with us. When we get something, we share with them. And so this way, we're covering from our youngest to our oldest citizens in the community. And the things we need to address, I believe we need to do more with less. It's go out and get grants, donations, do more things with less money. And that's in my time.
Thank you. Ms. Dunham?
I agree with Shar as far as what, what needs to be done in the future. Also, we need to continue making sure that we are within the budget and that we have adequate reserve for the future. So when things like COVID-19 strike, we don't actually, we will have money to provide for very vulnerable individuals within the township.
Thank you. Mr. Furio, top three priorities?
Thank you. Transparency is our biggest concern with the budget. The current Republican slate there spent about $120,000 on furnishings in their office while cutting the general assistance budget. So there was money going from people who needed it to furniture. Okay? That has to be stopped. And then Ms. Kegariz completely glossed over the situation where her husband asked the trustees to transfer money from the levy, from general assistance, over to highway to pay for his reelection campaign. That is not illegal. It is immoral and shameful. And I think that the Attorney General would like to take a closer look at that. So we need to communicate with our constituents. We need transparency. We need fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, Mr. Furio. Ms. Saturnus?
One of my top priorities, I've already mentioned, is vocational services. This is one line item that if we invest in, can pay back in dividends. It would reduce the need for emergency assistance if we are able to match our residents with jobs, people who need them. Secondly, obviously, COVID is going to be a top priority for, for us. Moving forward, we have to be creative as we are given opportunities to perhaps host a vaccine site. I would hope that we're able to be more creative than the current board was in terms of their response to the opportunity to host a testing site. Finally, we need to open the lines of communication, and that's a two-way street. One of my priorities will be to keep a finger on the pulse of what is not only in the offices of the township, but around the community, and also to make sure that we are communicating the services available to the residents.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Maitak, top three priorities?
Thank you. First priority as a commitment as an elected official is to keep the taxes low for our residents. And with that, we were able to cut the GA levy because we're using reserves. So we weren't taking any money away from GA. We're just able to use the reserves we have there, because you only want to carry so much in reserves before that becomes an issue. So it's low taxes for our residents while also continuing the services that we have that people utilize and coming up with new services that people are looking for. Lastly, it would be to retain and continue to hire employees that are passionate about township government, passionate about the residents, because those are the ones that, those are the people that make Schaumburg Township successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebutts, anyone? Ms. Kegariz, this would be your second and final rebuttal. 30 seconds, please.
Maybe Mr. Furio doesn't understand how township government works. GA has its separate funds. We can't transfer money between the two. And Roden Bridge Department, they cannot transfer money between the different funds. So when you see that the road district is levying higher than the other two, the road district has to always be prepared for some sort of catastrophe, a huge snowstorm, whatever. The other two.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time has elapsed. All right, we'll move on to the next question. What specific experience qualifies you to be a township trustee? Mr. Gibson, you go first.
Yeah, absolutely love this question. Okay, so I have fortunate enough to graduate from Purdue University with a chemical engineering degree, fortunate enough to go to DePaul University and graduated with an MBA. I've worked in all sorts of areas, food service, quality engineer, operations. I've worked with labor, I've worked without, with non-labor. I currently serve as a sales manager for a $41 billion global organization managing their entire US distribution strategy. So my job is to work with other multinationals to ensure that we execute strategies, not just for today or this week, but strategies that go for next year and the years down the line. I work across the table with different functional groups, and so I'm very versed at putting together plans and executing plans to achieve the goals, not just for myself, but for those across the table and any constituents that may be impacted by the choices or decisions that I make.
Thank you. Ms. Kegariz?
I feel I'm qualified for the job. I've spent the last 28 years serving this community as a school board member, and we have done a lot of things intergovernmental with the township. Also, I've volunteered at the township for the last 15 years, and I've gotten quite an insight in what goes on. I'm always amazed by how much they can get done and how many people they can service for so little money. And so that's one thing I learned as a school board member also. So I bring my frugality also to this board, and I have a background in food, so that also helps when we're planning things for GA and other things for our most needy citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Dunham?
So I've been a trustee for a while, and I've learned a lot, and that's one of the qualifiers. This is one of the reasons that I am qualified for, to continue to be a trustee. Also, during that time, I made sure that our communication to the township residents is top-notch. So we have a town crier that goes out to 60,000 households every quarter with all kinds of information about services and programs that the township provides. We have a website that actually has a little translate button and to translate into different languages. The Facebook has many, many impressions. It's probably one of the best tools to get the information out there. And we also have e-newsletters and then paper newsletters from various departments, our volunteers and committee members.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Mr. Furio?
Yes, thank you. That brings up a big difference between our two slates. Our slate is specialists ready to run from day one. The other side said that they needed training, classes, seminars. We don't need any of that. We have a human services expert. We have legal expertise. We have engineering background. Myself, 40 years in the transportation industry, I prepared bids, supplied materials for roads and bridges. I signed contracts and agreements with all kinds of subcontractors, the largest in the world, and all kinds of suppliers, labor, and projects to work with towns and cities and private industry as well. So we're going to be able to jump in there and make some good changes right away that the people will be able to appreciate and notice.
Thank you. Ms. Saturnus?
First, I'll talk about my leadership experience, going all the way back to high school when I was drum major editor of the yearbook, president of the National Honor Society. And then in college, I was a member of Duke Student Government, as well as president of a service organization at that time. And then more recently, I've served as chair of the Mental Health Committee, again, increasing the, the reach that we've had from the township to the community in regards to mental health. I am also a small business owner. I'm an independent contractor as a school psychologist, so I have experience in managing my own business. I wear many hats as a small business owner. And finally, as a school psychologist, I've developed a keen ability to just listen to people. I do a lot of listening, whether it's to students, parents, teachers, administrators, and then bringing all of those perspectives together in a solution-focused way. And I look forward to bringing that experience to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Maitak?
Thank you. What makes me qualify for this position? My upbringing, my education, my community involvement at many different levels in PTA, coaching, athletics, my involvement in Special Olympics, and other charitable organizations, my professional background, and most importantly, my, my working knowledge of the office and township government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Sure. I know that, I think I heard at least a couple other people have lived here for just as long as I have, but at 42 years, I'm the only one who was born and raised here, actually. And I know that several others are also fellow MBA graduates, but I do think I'm the only candidate with a law degree. And so those combination of education background, as well as the nonprofit board experience, executive leadership, managing a budget for the, my day job that's larger than the township's budget and successfully doing so, as well as having a leadership style where I am able to sit back, assess all the possible solutions, and help the boards that I sit on come up with the best one. It's why I'm the youngest board member for the nonprofit, but I also am president of that Board of Directors, because they saw that I had that insight to lead us forward. And I'll bring all those talents and more with me and my fellow candidates when we serve as Schaumburg Township trustees.
Thank you. Our next question, it's come up several times tonight, so let's ask the question and hear everyone's response. This year, the roads and bridge levy was raised by 5%, and the general assistance levy was cut by 3%. Do you agree or disagree with this change? And if you agree, how do you justify the change? Ms. Kegariz, you'll go first.
Well, I agree with this change. We believe we need to have a fund balance in the GA, but not to the point to where we're having to levy more money. So we just levied a flat levy for GA because the fund balance was growing. With the Roden Bridge, their levy grows every year, because if anybody remembers the snows of '79 and '69, we need money to be able to handle all of those, to be able to take care of. Am I out of time? Oh.
No, you still have time.
To take care of the roads and everything, because I've heard from many of our constituents in the unincorporated area, that they, we give them a false sense of hope. They go out, their roads are well taken care of, they hit the other highways taken care of by other entities, and they're shot, because they're not as well taken care of.
Thank you. Ms. Dunham, one minute, please. Ms. Dunham, you're on mute.
I believe that Jeff Maitak has addressed why general assistance was cut by 3%. That is, the tax was lowered by 3% because we were using the reserve. The reserve has grown to the point that we did not need to actually tax the residents anymore than minus 3%. As far as the road and bridge going up by 5%, they have to. In case of a disaster, in case of another tornado type that we had several years ago, or snow, or lack of salt, or whatever, they really need that money. I mean, what are you going to do if, if a disastrous strike? Go out there and borrow money? That's very expensive. That is not prudent management.
Thank you. Mr. Furio?
Yes, this current board continues to hide the fact that the levy was decreased, and then it was increased for the roads and bridges to pay for the $31,500 postage and publishing fees so that Mr. Kegariz could try to earn a position. That is illegal. It is immoral, and it might be criminal. So we need to hear from them how they are defending themselves on that transfer of money to pay for, for taxpayers to pay for a reelection campaign. I am not a legal whiz, but to me, that does not sound legal. But anyway, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Ms. Saturnus?
So if the reserve, I know that it has grown, it is quite large, but, you know, we should not only consider a tax decrease, but we should also consider the service particularly in a year when we had economic crisis and many families are struggling. One thing that I would like to invest
One thing that I would like to invest in would be vocational services. Again, decrease the need, hopefully, for many of the emergency services that are provided by the township. I would also just like to point out that the Road and Bridge Fund also carries a very large nest egg, about 11 months of the operating budget. And the recommendation really is about six months to carry a six month surplus. So why not take that same logic and apply it to the Road and Bridge Fund when the trustees are approving that budget?
Thank you. Mr. Maitak.
Yes, thank you. First, to address the general assistance or welfare services. As I mentioned earlier, we're able to cut that levy because of reserves. Actually, as a matter of fact, the 2021 budget is projecting to come in with an additional surplus of $300,000. So rather than tax the same amount or increase taxes when we already have reserves and we're going to have more reserves, that was a place where we felt we could cut that. As my fellow trustees have mentioned, highway commissioner, the highway department, there are unforeseen things that that money is needed for. For storms, for increased activity, for the fact that the price of salt can go up every year. So there's a lot of unknowns in that department. And if they don't levy appropriately for it, then the streets won't get plowed. And that's not just township streets, but it's also village of Shambur streets.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, we're certainly aware that it's not just a transfer that can be made from one fund to the other, but it's the optics of when you lower the one and you raise the other and which you're prioritizing. Because everybody on the current board is talking about that we had to be prepared for weather and we had to be prepared for roads, which I agree with. But those are factors we're familiar with every year. We live in Chicago. That's always going to be a factor. But we also need to be prepared for the mental health crisis that COVID has created and be upping our vocational offerings at the township level. That's an emergency that was unforeseen, unplanned for, that we needed funds for and that we could have used funds for. So I think it's just a matter of prioritizing. We obviously all care about our community. We have different takes on what we want to do. But I know many people in the community who were very upset when they saw that mailer from the highway commissioner, knowing full well that he was running for office and they'd never seen a mailer from him before.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson.
Yes, can I get the question again?
Absolutely. This year, the roads and bridges levy was raised 5% and the general assistance levy was cut 3%. Do you agree or disagree with this change? And if you agree, how do you justify the change?
Yeah, thank you. Now, I don't agree with this change. And my friend, Mr. Stewart, just made a comment about optics. Trustee Dunham mentioned that the reason for this was that, you know, that something has to be done. And trustee Maitak mentioned earlier that the priority is to minimize taxes on the constituents. Again, this is unimaginative solution planning, right? Things have to be done this way. Our priority is only to minimize taxes on our constituents. There are plenty of other ways to solve problems and challenges. And this, for me, goes back to the way that they responded to the COVID crisis. Lackluster, unimaginative, failed response for situations where we needed them at their most and they failed to provide the solutions that we needed for the community.
Thank you. All right, next question. What can the township do to increase affordable housing in the village? Ms. Dunham, you're first.
Oh. Well, we probably would have to find out what type of housing is available already. And if it is, then match those individuals that absolutely need affordable housing with whatever is available. I understand that Hoffman Estates has some land that things can be built on. Not sure how it's zoned, but built of Shambur is running out of land. So I don't know what can be done there. But again, we would have to look at what is available and match those who need with what is available.
Thank you. Mr. Furia.
Well, I would certainly seek relationships with different types of builders, contractors, and then seek grants from the federal and state services. This township board has been completely inept at getting any grants from state, local, and federal sources. While other townships go out and get hundreds, thousands of dollars in grants to do things, this township board does absolutely nothing to get any help. They just want to make the taxpayers pay for everything. It's just a horrible response. And we need people in there who are going to be aggressive and work hard for our people because that's what they expect. We're being paid to attend meetings and get things done, not to postpone meetings and call them off. So yeah, we need some new blood in there.
Thank you. Ms. Saturnus, what can the township do to increase affordable housing in the village?
I appreciate this question. Affordable housing is an issue that is very important to me. I think in terms of what the township can do, this is a place where we can really partner with the villages that are in charge of a lot of the zoning and making sure that affordable housing opportunities are available in this area. Another thing that the township can do is help residents to find housing. So in addition to helping to connect people with jobs and investing in vocational training, the township can offer services for people who may have difficulty finding affordable housing, just to help connect them.
Thank you. Mr. Maitak.
Yeah, can you please repeat that question, Catherine?
I'd be happy to. What can the township do to increase affordable housing in the village?
I think what the township can bring is helping people find affordable housing. Township is social services and human services. It's not really the building of houses. So yes, we can definitely expand our scope and help people that need affordable housing, put them in touch with places that they have it, whether it's a home or apartments or condos, whatever they need. We can definitely do that. And I think that's an area we can definitely help people along with the other services we offer and job assistance and the other health, physical and mental health and the like.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
I'm proud to say that my fellow Democratic candidates and I have recently obtained the endorsement of Reclaim Northwest group that their mission is centered around affordable housing and working with townships on providing solutions that will be creative and work at a township level. Oftentimes, you know, people in the community might think that that's a village level or a different level of government, but the townships can certainly be involved in attracting more affordable housing from the different vendors and community builders and organizations and corporations that are going to be constructing in our borders, whether that's unincorporated or within the incorporated areas. And Reclaim Northwest doesn't just endorse candidates such as us, but they then work with us during our term to help us ensure that we're coming up with and creating good possible solutions for our township residents for affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson.
Yes, I think one of the most important things to remember is as a leader, you don't have to be the smartest person in the room. The most important thing that a leader can do is to be humble enough to understand that they need help or to put the right people around them to provide or plan for solutions. Again, this goes to strategy and planning. We need to do an assessment of what is needed. We need to put down in writing an action plan and then we need to act upon that plan. It is absolutely imperative that we have a straightforward path in order to respond to situations like this. The constituents in our community are in need of housing, affordable housing, and there's been no response. Just to say that we can look at it or think about it, it's not enough. We need to put together a plan. We need to execute that plan. And then we need to show the fruits of our labor to our constituents.
Thank you. Ms. Kegarice.
Can you hear me?
I can't.
Statutorily, it isn't in our purview to be finding housing for the people in the township. But one thing this township does do for the people who are here, those with lower incomes, if their heat's going to be shut off, we help them pay for their heating, their lighting. We help out with mortgages where needed and stuff. So we are taking a proactive approach to making sure that these people aren't left in the dark or in the cold. We're taking care of them. And if we're going to build new houses, as was suggested, there's very little land left. We're almost landlocked in this township. So I'd love to hear where you want to build.
Thank you. Next question. Illinois has notoriously, has notoriety for more government units than any other. Oh, I'm.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gibson. I was on mute. Would you like a rebuttal?
Yes, please.
30 seconds, please.
Okay, so again, this goes to being imaginative and thinking outside the box. Trustee Kegarice just mentioned that it's not in the purview of the township in order to help people find housing or in order to find solutions for those people who need affordable housing. Working with others who have the expertise to execute a plan does not per, outside the purview of the trustees in order to find solutions for our constituents.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next question. Illinois has notoriety of having more government units of government than any other state. With that in mind, why do we need townships? And what do they do that could not be combined with village governments? We'll start with Mr. Furia.
Well, the townships play an indispensable role in local government because the village would have to take over all those services. And the village, right now, I think that they're pretty much at capacity. They'd have to add a lot more people and add a lot more resources to be able to cover all the increased responsibilities that the township takes over. So without townships, the village budget would be very, very much larger and might not be as efficient. But I really think that that goes back to the budget. And you know, we're spending money on furniture and lighting and you know, more than the budget for community relations. So you know, we got to get a handle on our fiscal responsibility. It's not there now.
Thank you, Mr. Furia. Ms. Saturnus.
I'm certainly open to considering this issue. And this is an example of where we must listen to our residents. And I understand people who have the viewpoint that township is an excessive form of government. I grew up in a rural town in Texas where taxes were low, but so were services. I did not have a library. I did not have a park district. I don't think there were sidewalks in most parts of my city or town. But township governments currently provide vital services. So if it were to be eliminated, we would need a plan so that those services and efficiency are not lost and not only thinking about people in incorporated parts of the township and the villages taking over those services, but also people who live in unincorporated parts of the township.
Thank you. Mr. Maitak.
Thank you. Townships are critical to the community. There are social services, there are human services that the municipalities don't offer, that the county doesn't offer. And if townships were to go away, then those services would go away also, or they would fall onto municipalities. Many municipalities don't want to take those on. If it wasn't for the municipalities, it would go to Cook County. Then you have a county which is already a large level of government trying to take on more and provide more services for more people. The township is the smallest body and it's the closest to the residents, closest to the community. And it's the best way to be able to get services to the people that are in most need of those services.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to echo Lauren's point because the first thing I thought of when this question was posed is those living in the unincorporated areas deserve to have a right to have a voice. And I don't think they'd, you know, opt to be out of the services that the township provides. But we provide those to everybody within the township, not just those in the unincorporated areas. And so to that end, I do feel that it is not an area that should be eliminated. But I do agree with the sentiment that Illinois does have far too many governmental bodies, most of which are actually in our court system. But there is a way for townships to provide for, provide a solution for that and to work with what entities need to be eliminated and maybe take on and absorb some of those roles. You know, as Lauren mentioned, it would be something we would need to put, to vote for us to hear from our constituents and do as they direct us. We're working for them after all.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson.
Yes, I think Ms. Saturnus and Mr. Stewart summed it up quite nicely. I think we serve on behalf of our constituents and it's important to listen to them. If they bring it forward that they would like to eliminate township officials, then it should be taken into consideration. The township does provide very vital programs and services for our constituents, which I think is important. And if they're bringing this question forward, it may be that they're not aware of all the township has to offer, which I would point to as the fact that it has not been adequately communicated by the current trustees on what's available to the township residents and what programs and services they can take part of. So if this question is coming up, it is concerning to me that they are not aware of all the things that can be done by the township for their behalf.
Thank you. Ms. Kegarice.
I believe when we levy money in the township and we spend it, it's the most efficient use of the money. For a little more than two tanks of gas a year is all we collect in taxes on your tax bill and the services that we're able to provide for that. I know I would, and most people I talked to, they're more unwilling. They said, when you put it in that terms, that it mounts to a little more than two tanks of gas. They're like, okay, you are doing a lot of things with a little amount of money. And so I wish all forms of government worked efficiently and effectively as townships do.
Thank you. Ms. Dunham.
So I do agree that the township is the government closest to the people. It provides critical services for very little money. If you take a look at your property real estate tax, the town fund itself under is like 1.06% of the entire tax bill. I mean, who else is that efficient and well managed than the township of Shambur?
Thank you. Moving on to our next and final question before we get to closing statements. Please describe your personal vision for the township and how you would implement that vision. And we'll start with Ms. Saturnus.
My personal vision. My personal vision for the township includes that it is a place where many people can come and receive services that are vital. We've heard a lot of candidates talk about the importance of responding to the weather, but we have multiple crises going on right now. A mental health crisis, an economic crisis, and township should be a place where many people know that they can come and receive the services that they need. And in order to do that, we need to think more creatively about how we can help and how funds can be used and where we need to invest. Homelessness has skyrocketed in Schaumburg, and there are clearly more needs for our families that, that we need to address as a township.
Thank you, Mr. Maitak.
Thank you. My, my goal, my vision for the township is to continue to grow the services, continue to, to do what we need for the residents of this township while keeping property taxes low. Property taxes are a big part of everybody's income. It hits everybody. And as trustee Donna mentioned, we're a very small part of it, and we're doing a lot with it. And I want to keep that up. I want to be, I want to be the best township around here. There are some townships that give other townships a, a bad name because they do the bare bones minimum. And when this COVID crisis came up, they closed their doors. And we didn't do that. And we're not going to do that. And I want to continue to do the things that people need, whether it's helping them find affordable housing, or it's the food pantry, or whatever it is. That's what we want to do to help people, the taxpaying residents of this township.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. And as I mentioned before, I, my vision for this township includes transparency, inclusiveness, and diversity. And if I can touch a little more on the inclusiveness that I mentioned before, it was comical to see how our team of candidates, when we tried to find out either how, from the website, how to, how to run for office within the township, or how to join a meeting of one of the meetings we were trying to attend and get the information for that, how little information there was out there. And we want to increase that information for the community. And I think it's also, you know, everybody here agrees that the township staff does a great job, but not having a COVID testing site, or the fact that us Democrats, ironically, are the ones asking for the fiscal responsibility and accountability with that highway commissioner's mailer. It's just sometimes frustrating as a resident, but that's why I'm here to get involved and hope to make it for a better place to live. I think it's a great place already, but let's keep improving.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Yes, my vision for the township is to increase diverse, increase transparency, and to increase programs and, or since increase, to focus on the programs and services that are most vital to our constituents. We need to have creative planning. We need to have solutions and strategies that are written down and executable and not just fluff or talking points that we have after things are said and done to say, oh, we did X, Y, and Z. We need to finally show our constituents all that this Schaumburg Township can be by properly demonstrating to them what a committed trustee team is going to do and offer for them. Like I said before, they're not aware of what we have to offer, and that's sad. And they should be aware because they would have much more impact on the programs and services that they want and need, and not just giving the same programs and services that they've been accustomed to.
Thank you, Ms. Kegarice.
What I'd like to see in the future is also with transparency and communication. The hardest thing is the people who use our services the most are, are elderly, senior people. And I wish there was a way we could get computer classes to all of them because it'd be much easier to get the message to them. And most of them don't come out of their houses. They don't drive and all these different things. We work on it. Every single week, somebody makes the comment that we need to work harder on this. We need to reach out to another group of people. We do not want anybody left behind. And so we're doing what we can. But when some people make it hard for us to communicate with them, it's hard to let them know what we have to offer.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham.
Well, to continue to do more with less while maintaining fiscal responsibility and a balanced budget, to provide more outstanding services and innovative programs, although we have done a lot this year with innovative programs, and then preserve dependable and transparent township government. And if I, if we had like millions and millions of dollars, I would absolutely love to have senior citizens center.
Thank you, Mr. Furio.
My vision of the future would be our slate being the new board because we are harder working, smarter, and more determined to make changes in people's lives. We would certainly have our communication with our constituents. We'd send out a survey right away to see what additional services are needed, not just same old. And we would go out and get grants. We would not force the taxpayers to pay 100% of our revenues. We would go out and get grants. We would seek this out. The, the current board doesn't do any of that. And, and we would have much better fiscal responsibility. We wouldn't be buying furniture and lighting. We'd be providing more services for the people. We wouldn't be buying, spending money on mailers for people's reelection campaigns. So that's the vision I see for the future is a more customer-centered approach. Instead of blaming the customer, saying, oh, they don't understand, we will make them understand in the way that they choose by maybe sending out a letter.
Thank you. Time now requires that we move to closing statements, and I'll begin by reading a statement submitted by candidate Namish Johnny, who was unable to join our forum tonight. Following the League's forum rules, the statement is limited to three minutes or equal time allotted to other candidates for their opening and closing statements. I'll begin now. Hello, my name is Namish Johnny, and I'm running for reelection as Schaumburg Township trustee. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this wonderful event. While I'm disappointed I'm unable to be attend due to a scheduling conflict, I thank you for providing me this opportunity to address you through this statement. Every community, our area, our state, our nation, and our world has not gone untouched by the pandemic we have faced over the last year. While we begin to see the light at the end of the tunnel, we need to assess what we have accomplished and what we can still do in the months ahead. While many units of government have mobilized to treat the sick, assist businesses, help the less fortunate, and those who are struggling, township government is uniquely positioned in such a crisis as this, since it is our ongoing mission. Schaumburg Township has accomplished many of these actions before the pandemic and continues to do so now. I've been a resident of Schaumburg Township for the last 32 years, and it was with great pride that I ran for trustee in 2013 as an opportunity to give back to my community that has given me so much. In this time, I worked with my colleagues and township to provide essential services to our neighbors. When it is providing critical assistance to residents with general assistance, the mobile dental clinic, and the township food pantry to assist those with disabilities, from providing necessary transportation services for senior citizens, to giving residents a safe space to cope with life's challenges at the Kenneth Young Center. I am particularly proud of the township's efforts to help coordinate COVID-19 vaccinations during these challenging times. With township trusts, with Schaumburg Township continuing to provide these critical services and more, we need to do so in a fiscally responsible manner. As a small business owner myself, I understand having to live within a budget. That is why I've never supported a tax increase, as we've been able to accomplish our community's mission while living within our means. In these trying times, we simply cannot burden our residents with additional taxation. I will always work with my colleagues at the township to prioritize internal efficiencies so that we may continue to provide the essential services our residents have come to expect. While we have accomplished so much on behalf of our friends and neighbors in Schaumburg Township, there is still much to be done. That is why I humbly ask for your vote on April 6th to ensure that our communities and Schaumburg Township continue to receive the assistance they need and deserve while keeping taxes low. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you today. And if I can ever be of assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me. And now, candidates, you each will have one minute for your closing statements, and we'll begin with Mr. Maitak.
Thank you very much. As I, you know, mentioned earlier in my opening statements and, and in answering the questions here, I've, my education, my community involvement, my professional background, those are things that are important to me, being a good township trustee in the past and in the future. The last year has limited my abilities to, as all of us, to be out in the community. But when I'm out in the community, I hear from people. Some people are eager to tell you about their positive experiences with the township. Other people who come for services are a little more maybe embarrassed or don't want to be as vocal about it. But I, I'm always hearing positive things from, from the residents, from the community, and I want to continue that. And as I mentioned, most importantly, I've got a working knowledge of the office, what townships do, what this township does, and what it takes to keep it successful and to move it forward. So I humbly ask for your support on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you all again for joining this forum and to the League of Women Voters for so professionally and fairly hosting it as well. I'm running as a citizen candidate for Schaumburg Township trustee alongside my fellow Democratic candidates, looking to improve Schaumburg together. It may sound trite, but I'm really just a good and involved neighbor, seeking the vote of my fellow neighbors. I know I'll bring the care and concern to this role. They'd want to see brought to it if they had been elected themselves. Democracy is about the electorate having a choice for just that kind of representative government. Our slate of Democratic candidates are equally qualified and capable of succeeding in these roles for the betterment of the township in many ways. I look forward to our residents sharing their ideas with us and getting to know us even better to see what we plan to offer our great community. I hope they'll elect me township trustee on April 6th to be a great steward for Schaumburg. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Your closing statement, one minute, please.
Yes, thank you again, Legal Women Voters and Schaumburg Library for hosting and coordinating this event tonight. This is the point of the night where I'm supposed to ask for your vote, but more importantly, I hope that I've earned your vote. We have shown tonight that the current trustees have failed repeatedly to have a strategy to move the township forward. They have failed to properly and effectively utilize your taxpayer dollars, and they have failed to respond to the COVID crisis when it was most needed. You deserve new leadership and a team that will prepare the township not just for the needs of today, but for the needs of the future. A team that will effectively and efficiently manage your tax dollars to provide, develop, and promote those programs and services that are most effective and needed. If you're ready to step forward, you should vote for myself, Lawrence Suturnus, Matthew Stewart, and Robert Furio. And together, we'll put the township on a path for success, not just for today, but for tomorrow and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kegarice.
Well, I believe we've already reached out to the community. The two years I have sat on this board, there hasn't been a week go by that I haven't attended a meeting somewhere at the library, at the village, at community events with the scouts, with the schools and whatever. I'm out there listening and wanting to hear what people want and what they really need from this township board. And I have to sing the praises of this board that they put the community first above anything else. It may not be the most popular thing, but if it's taking care of our most needy and vulnerable citizens, this board will put their neck out there to protect our people who need us the most. So to that end, I ask for your support and your vote for our team, because as a team, we get the job done.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham.
So I am running with the current board, who are trusted leadership that will keep the Schaumburg Township the best place to live, work, and raise a family. And I am a candidate for Schaumburg Township trustee. I do ask for your vote so that the work can continue with the township.
Thank you, Mr. Furio.
Thanks very much, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Sawyer, Ms. Peterson, League of Women Voters, and Schaumburg Township Library. It was great to show the contrast between our slates. We have an amazing slate of tremendously gifted, skilled, experienced, and educated individuals who will work hard and smart to make lasting positive improvements to our township residents. Obviously, the budget has been a big problem with the Republicans, so we will clean that up by going over each line item and cutting out all the waste, fraud, and abuse and corruption that we've found in there. But the most shameful act is using taxpayer money to help somebody get elected who's a relative of somebody on the board. That's something that cannot stand. So we hope that our slate earns your vote. We will work very hard for you, and you will see great results. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, and Ms. Suturnus.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to everyone who has joined us. In this election, you have the power to show that your local leaders are accountable to you. The current board has failed in their COVID response. They turned their backs on an opportunity to give residents greater access to COVID testing, and they ignore CDC guidelines during their public meetings. The board has also improperly approved a tax increase and coinciding budget that included the promotion of a fellow Republican seeking higher office while decreasing the funds available for general assistance for residents. When you cast your ballot, I ask that you vote for me, Lawrence Suturnus, and the rest of our Democratic slate. We will bring transparency. We will work diligently to ensure a more robust, creative response to the pandemic and ensuing economic and mental health crises. And finally, we will put the needs of Schaumburg Township residents above our own. Thank you.
Thank you. As we bring this forum to a close, I want to thank the candidates for their participation. We would like to encourage all of our candidates to recycle their campaign signs. Members of the public can do so as well. Please visit the League of Women Voter Palatine Area website for details. If you are not a registered voter, you can find registration on our website as well at www.lwpalatinearea.org. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the Schaumburg Library, thank you all for coming. And don't forget, early voting begins on March 22nd. There's plenty of election information available on the League's website. Please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot. Your vote is your voice. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.